I'm on my meeting right now. I will be there, but he asked me a question in about 30 seconds.
All right, are we ready to get started? Okay, great. Well, why don't we go? The October 14th regularly scheduled Albany Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. And we will call this meeting to order. Staff, if we can go to roll call, please. Yes, Commissioner Donaldson?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Ken?
Here.
Commissioner McLeod?
Here.
Chair Wadi?
Here.
Thank you. Next up, item three on our agenda are expertise communications. Do any commissioners have any expertise communications to disclose today? Commissioner Jennings?
Yes, so as I disclosed at the prior hearing, where we considered 844 Jackson, I do know the applicants socially and I was informed by the applicants that they received a letter from their neighbor objecting to the revised plans that are before us tonight and although I just wanted to say that I don't agree with how some of the things in that letter were characterized with respect to my participation in the prior proceedings, I am going to voluntarily recuse myself from 844 Jackson this evening, just to avoid any distraction or questions about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Donaldson, did you also?
Yeah, I had an email earlier this week from an architect who I know somewhat been a resident of Albany for many years and he sent me some set of plans with a project he was looking at and had was the applicant for in Albany. And I responded that I didn't open the plans, I didn't open the plans and I responded that it probably wasn't appropriate for me to respond if that project might come to the planning commission. And then I might have to recuse myself. So I just said, you know, he should work with staff. It did involve a parking exception, so it probably would eventually come to the come to PNC, so. I think that's my report.
Okay, wonderful. Any others before we move on? Okay, seeing them, we'll move on to item four, which is our consent calendar. And I will go ahead and read off all of the items as agendized on the consent. Although I know there are several that are likely to be pulled off, but we'll just go ahead and work through them one at a time here. So item four dash one is the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes from September 23rd. Item four dash two is Planning Application 20-031 Design Review and Amendment and Parking Reduction for a Single Story Addition at 844 Jackson. Item four dash three Planning Application 20-041 Design Review and Conditional Use Permit for a Building Lift and Conversion at 1152 Portland. Four dash four Planning Application 20-042 Design Review Parking Reduction and Conditional Use for a Two-Level Addition at 629 Talbot. Item four dash five Planning Application 20-044 Design Review for a Two-Level Addition at 934 Pomona. And four dash six Planning Application 20-038 Design Review and Conditional Use for a Second Story Balcony Enclosure at 953 Stanage Avenue. And with that, I believe, staff, you emailed the commission earlier this evening about 844 Jackson coming off the consent calendar as well as 629 Talbot and potentially a few others, depending on if there are still concerns from neighbors who will say so, I guess, during when we open this up for public comment. So outside of the item on Jackson and Pomona, are there any other items listed on the consent calendar that commissioners would like to pull off the consent calendar?
I need to recuse myself on four, three, 1152 Portland, and I haven't, I'm not prepared to say anything about that, and I need to recuse myself on that. And then on 934 Pomona, I have some comments. No serious, but so I guess, I guess we should pull it, but I won't think I'll need a staff report. I just had some comments on it.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Donaldson, which one was that that you had comments on?
That would be nine, uh, three, four Pomona, that's four dash five.
Commissioner McLeod, did you wish to pull any of those items?
Just a quick clarification for the minutes, that's all.
Okay.
All right, so why don't we, what does that leave us with? That leaves us with item four dash six appears to be on the remain on the consent calendar. And or staff, are you keeping track of these? Maybe if I could ask you to keep track of these ones that commissioners would like to pull off and recuse and maybe just given the number of neighborhood comments that we've had, why don't we go ahead and open this up for to the public and see if any members of the public wish to pull any of these items off the consent calendar and then we'll aggregate these and see where that leaves us to act on the consent calendar. So staff, you could let us know if there's anyone from the public wishing to speak on the consent calendar. Now is your time to raise your hand.
I see Jeremiah has his hand raised. If there's anyone else who would like to pull anything off the consent counter, please use the raise your hand function. Jeremiah, you may speak now.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, council. I'd like to pull 844 Jackson as well. I was just, I was kind of a neighbor. So I just want to pull that for discussion, please, because I'm really involved in that specific area, that specific location in Albany, especially the corner of Jackson and Solano. I just had signed a lease for that corner and then the landlord had backed out on it and this whole weird thing with Albany and all this stuff. But yeah, I'm right there in that area. So I was just there. So I want to pull this for discussion, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other hands raised regarding items on consent?
I see Benjamin Hensler. Benjamin, you can now speak.
Um, I don't know if this is the opportunity to speak about 844 Jackson, or will that be later on the agenda?
That will be later.
For public comment. Okay, then I'm, I'm lowering my hand and I'll raise my hand at that point. Thank you.
We'll call you when we speak to that item.
Thanks.
Are there any other folks who would like to speak as to the remaining items on the consent calendar? Seeing none?
I see no one else. Yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment on the consent calendar. And staff, if you've been able to kind of pull together where we might be, give us a little guidance here.
Sure. So we have a request to revisit the meeting minutes for clarification. And otherwise, I'll actually call this out. So we don't have any hands raised for 1152 Portland. And I think and 953 Stanage. So I think those are two that if you wanted to take action, you know, talk through the minutes and then take action on those two, we can then go through the consent calendar item by item.
Okay, great. Why don't we, Commissioner McLeod, you had a comment on the minutes. Why don't we go ahead and do that and then we can see if we have a motion on those three items, understanding Commissioner Donaldson has recused for Portland.
I was just the last sentence of the paragraph where it says San Pablo can accommodate the north end because it's within walking distance of public transportation. I'd like that changed to just walking distance of the BART station. The whole corridor is within walking distance of the public transportation. So it was more specifically within walking distance of the BART station. So very simple. That's all.
Okay. Um, do, would anyone like to make a motion then on the remaining items? So item four dash one are the minutes with that amendment. Item four dash three with Commissioner Donaldson recused and item four dash six.
I can move to approve the consent calendar. Items four, one, four dash three with Commissioner Donaldson recused and item four dash six.
Okay, great. Why don't we go ahead and do a roll call vote with that and Commissioner Donaldson, I know it's a little awkward, but your vote is assuming a recusal on item four dash three if we move forward.
Technically second.
Okay, great. So we've got a motion and a second from Commissioner McLeod. With that, I'll call the item. So Commissioner Donaldson.
I will vote in favor of the consent calendar, but recusing myself on item four dash three. Is that right? Four dash three. So I'll move the, so I'll vote for the minutes and I'll vote in favor of four, six, which is nine, five, three Stanage.
And then on the motion, Commissioner Ken?
I vote yes on the motion.
Commissioner McLeod?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So those three items pass, item four dash one and four dash six with a vote of five to zero. And item four dash three with a vote of four to zero with Commissioner Donaldson recused. With that, why don't we move to, staff, how would you like to do this? Should we just move forward with presentations and start with item four dash two on Jackson Street?
Um, you know, I'm wondering if it might be beneficial to go through the Talbot and Pomona projects first, since it sounds like they have questions. There are questions. 844 Jackson, it looks like we have a fair amount of public discussion, so maybe we can take.
Sure, why don't we go ahead and do that? Then why don't we call item four dash four? The design review parking reduction and conditional use for 629 Talbot Avenue. And are you, is staff planning on giving a presentation on that one, or should we just open it up for questions?
I think, I think questions are fine, if you want to.
Great, then. Commissioners, were there any specific questions on this item?
This is 629 Talbot. Yeah, I, I, I do have some concerns about this. I, I'm, I'm concerned about the gable configuration for this project. Let me pull up the file here. Why are the gables, why, why are they cross gables and why aren't the gables for the second floor addition same, the same as the gables on the existing elevation? I, I think it's awkward and it puts the solar panels right on the street face. And there's existing solar panels on the roof that are south facing. And so I would be interested in turning, turning the entire design around and I wonder why the applicant chose to do it the way they're doing it. Turn the whole design around so that the gables face the south and they can put their solar panels there and they won't be so visible from the street. It's just a design review question. They may, they may have reasons why they think this, that would be unworkable. I don't know. But I did, I do, I do have designer review concerns about that.
Why don't, why don't we then go ahead and is, if the applicant is on the line, we'll go ahead and open it up for the applicant to give us a brief presentation or respond to Commissioner Donaldson's questions. And then we can open it up for public comment and then circle back for discussion, just since it sounds like it wasn't just a clarifying question, but more of a designer review comment.
Yeah, right.
Okay, the project applicant is Edward Buchanan. Edward, if you would please speak, you can now speak.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks. Yes. Hi, I'm Edward Buchanan. To answer the question, the reason for the cross gable was a way to minimize height. It would be a taller building if we oriented the gable in the cross direction, but that was really the majority of the reason to soften that. And then secondarily, because the gable, we're, one of the goals of the project was to minimize the bulk of this project and therefore we held it, the back wall of the addition back from the back wall of the house below it. And by doing that, if, if, and also having a cross gable helped to make that not quite as bulky, not as tall to the backyard. That was really the primary, primary design thought about that. Should I continue with more of a general presentation, or is it really more about answering the questions at this time? Oh.
I, I, I hear what you're saying. I understand that myself. I wonder if any other commissioners share my concerns about it, or are we okay with it? It's, it's not bad, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm still think the cross gable configuration is awkward and I would rather see solar panels not being so prominent on the roof from the street view. So that may just be my my prejudice. That's all.
The other, the other thing, if I might add, is that the neighbor to the right at 633 Talbot had a cross gable and I was just thinking in general about, you know, blending in a little bit more, but that was just.
I did notice that, yeah. I, I, I hear, I hear you on that. Yeah.
Okay.
Doug, one thing, I don't know if you will be able to see the panels from the street. I mean, the elevation is deceiving. If you look at the section, it quotes, if you cut the angle, you wouldn't see the top of the roof from the street, I don't think.
It is, yeah, set quite a ways back, exactly.
Yeah, but it is quite a ways back. You're right.
Well, why don't we, just since we've opened this up to the, the project applicant, we've got about a little over two minutes or a little under three minutes less left of your presentation. So, Mr. Buchanan, if there's any other aspects that you would like to present to the commission, why don't you go ahead and take that time now? And we'll see if there's anyone in public comment and then we can turn it back for more of a dialogue with commission.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the, the idea with this project was, and my clients, if they have a chance to speak, will also highlight this, but essentially, this is a classic McGregor and the idea in adding a bedroom and a bathroom was to not extend out, but rather go up to preserve the outdoor space. And then, and then match as many of the existing details as we possibly can, and that includes a lower wall height in the upper floor at seven foot six, not eight feet. It includes the clay tiles at the rake edges and recessed window details. And then just where it was located, keeping it back from the front of the house and also back from the rear of the house so as not to be a looming boxy kind of mass on top of the house. The, we do have two concerns from, from neighbors about privacy from the deck, it seems, and some of the windows. I think my clients will probably go into more detail and it really outlining the letter that they submitted, I think, did a really good job of summarizing the impacts and the context of those concerns. But the deck is a really small deck. It's only accessible from the master bedroom, so it's not a high usage. It's not a intense usage kind of place. The hot tub, because of the small size of the deck, really is a two-person hot tub kind of size. And screening wise, privacy wise, to the neighbor in the rear, there's two mature redwood trees, the houses are 100 feet apart approximately, and a mature oak tree as well. With regards to windows, the last point I want to make about the windows that face south to the neighbor, the right-hand neighbor at 633. That window is really for light and ventilation. It's located above a bed. It's the only location the bed can be. And it has a high sill of about four and a half feet. So you, the only way to really look down from that window to the adjacent property is to be standing right at the window. But because the bed is there and because it's a nighttime, it's a bedroom. I really don't see that as a, an impact as one might otherwise assume. I think that that really kind of summarizes the general design thing. I'm pretty much out of time and my clients, I think, will do a nice job of of talking more about general privacy between the properties.
Thank you. Chris, go ahead and open it up then for public comment and then we'll loop back to the commission.
Sure, I see Jeremiah's hand up for public comment. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Jeremiah, you have three minutes starting now.
Hi, thanks. Is it three minutes or is it five minutes? I thought it was five minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes for discussions. Okay, that's fine. I'm used to that, right? Okay, so you know, basically, we don't want anybody to be unhappy in Albany, right? So first thing I want to say before I forget is, you know, I think we should table this, you know, for further discussion. You know, I don't think you should pass anything tonight, especially on a first reading. Should take two readings, right? So the neighbors, you know, we want a community to where everybody's happy, you know, once, because they were probably getting along and everything was going fine. And now we don't want anybody unhappy in Albany. We want to have a close-knit community. These people have probably been friends for, for years. Who knows, right? And you don't want anything to come between them because someone wants to make more money by having Airbnb or something, you know, and I did Google Maps. I looked at that property with satellite view. And there's a lot of buildings on that property, not many trees and I mean, I see a little backyard, but it's cement and you know, it's like a concrete jungle, you know, and I just wish that, you know, instead of building all this stuff, you could plant more trees, you know, and have a community to where instead of building buildings, you know, if you build all these buildings and all these decks, now you can't plant a lemon tree or a cherry tree or some sort of life, you know. You know, when they built these houses 50 years ago, you know, their view, you know, you might be obstructing the neighbor's view, you know, if they have original pictures of their view when they bought the home, they're entitled to that view, you know, and sure, this might make more money to the city, so you guys might get paid all these $4,000 fees, right? So of course you're going to pass it. Of course you're going to say yes, right? But you've got to consider people's feelings, you know, it's, it's around the.
Jeremiah, you're still speaking, but we can't hear you.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, so my, my, my thing would be basically just table this to, to the next meeting and give the, give the opportunity for the neighbors to work things out and further discuss it and maybe someone for the city can be a mediator. You know, more, more transparency because some things could be lost here. So just include the neighbors, maybe a meeting group, some sort of renters coalition or owners coalition can meet about this property and have further discussion. So I suggest table it for further discussion, please. So the neighbors could have some time to be happy and not take a.
Time's up. Next speaker, Susan Dickman. You have three minutes starting now.
It's Suzanne Dykman. And I'm the neighbor who shares a fence. I have the redwood trees behind the house, the 629 Talbot, and I am concerned about privacy that if it's all contingent upon my having redwood trees there. So the lower the height of the second story, the better, as far as I'm concerned. I, I haven't seen the full plans, but I know Albany is changing. Many people put on second stories now or accessory units, but that, I just wanted to state my concern about that. If there's something looking out into my yard through the redwood trees, that's of concern to me. So I just wanted to state that publicly. That's all. And I think, you know, I, I haven't seen the plans. I have to admit, I don't know if I just didn't access the correct things, but I did want to state that. So if that could be taken into consideration, I'd be very appreciative. I've lived here a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, I have the property owner, Michael Donald. You have three minutes starting now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so thanks very much. I really appreciate your time this evening. Really just want to reiterate a little bit of what our architect mentioned that our design consideration in this was really to try to maintain the character of the property and the character of the yard. And so you know, our, our very first thought was we don't want to pave over any more of our yard than, than we possibly have to do. In fact, we actually had an initial set of drawings that were less expensive, but we lost too much of the yard and we decided that wasn't, we weren't comfortable with that. And that's why we decided to go up. But as, as Ed said, our real goal was minimize the height, minimize the mass so that the house didn't feel like it was, it was encroaching on our yard and our neighbor's yard any more than absolutely necessary. As I said in my letter, I mean, we totally appreciate the concerns of the neighbors. I, I I very much understand that houses are keep getting built up higher and bigger around here and but at the same time, the lots are tiny, that, you know, we only have a few feet between houses. So it really is inevitable that we're going to, whether we do anything or not, we don't have a great deal of privacy between neighbors. Our, our windows look into their yards now. The new windows we're building will not look into their yards in any appreciable, appreciably different manner than, than they do already. And, and you know, with respect to the deck, as, as, as our architect mentioned, the primary design decision that drove this was to keep the house, the, the new part of the house moved back from the, from the yard, so it didn't loom over the yard so much. And so, so the deck design was actually to, to give us, you know, a smaller footprint of the upstairs, but also still feel like it was consistent. But you know, the, I totally appreciate that the neighbors will, will see a slightly different structure and, and we understand that that's unfortunate, but we also understand that there's nowhere else in our property that we can put an extra bathroom without either giving up our yard or giving up some height. But, but to Suzanne's point about the height, that is what we're trying to minimize. You know, with it, with the, I've been up on the roof and with the structures that she has on her property and we have on our property, there really aren't great sightlines between our roof into her yard. The other neighbor should complain. There's virtually no sightlines between our house and theirs. And so, you know, I, I really think that what our architect has come up with is probably the best compromise between all these competing interests. So thanks for your attention.
Thank you. We have one more speaker, Frank Szabolski. Sorry if I butchered that. You have three minutes starting now.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, it's Frank Szabolski and my wife Julie Peterson. We've owned the house at 627 Talbot since 1984. We bought it at that time. We have, in fact, ourselves built an accessory building and I know the conditions and requirements have changed a lot in Albany, where they're not just about allowing everything to go forward. If it's going to be an extra space, we weren't allowed to waive the parking or anything. And I'm concerned mostly about the privacy and also about the drainage to the house because from our experience, unfortunately, bad experience with remodeling on the house at 625 Talbot, we had to call the city engineers to stop concrete pouring because they didn't account for the drainage of the water of that, of that lot coming across and into our front yard across with the new roof configuration. So that would be a concern. And I, I think the design is nice. I think putting a balcony at the top in the back, we had made plans ourselves to do similar things. But I don't know why the hot tub has to be on the balcony, which would look right down into our kitchen window and into our dining room. Right now, he, Michael said, there's no view. There's a view from his garage window straight into our bathroom upstairs, the way the house is configured. He may not know that, but it's true because the gentleman before who owned the house since it was built, made the same consideration, told me about that. Okay, so privacy, I don't know why the hot tub can't go on the new deck that's being built rather than on, on the roof, on a balcony where it's structurally less likely to be failing in an earthquake too. And we are right on the Hayward Fault. We get three or four shakes a year.
Also?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, my wife is concerned, but we have three major projects going on on this street right now. And I'm worried about the sequencing. There's no parking. We can't park on the side streets. Every day there are trucks coming up and down with the crew getting out. And we've even had a crew park in our driveway and take up space. trucks coming up and down with the crew getting out. And we've even had a crew park in our driveway and take up space. So I think this should be sequenced so that there's not three major remodelings going on at once. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any Seeing no others, no other speakers.
Okay, great. Uh, then with that, we will go ahead and close public comment and we will now turn it back to uh commissioners, uh, commissioner comments and if there are any remaining questions. Um, Commissioner McLeod, were you raising your hand earlier?
Yeah, I just wanted to just clarify that the hot tub is part of this application because it um says maybe phase two, or I mean, is it or is it not part of this application? So that could be clarified. I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Do we still have the sponsor on the line? Are you available to answer that question?
Would you want to allow the architect or the property owner to speak?
The architect, maybe.
Okay. Go ahead, Edward. You have some time to answer the question.
Yeah, thank you. Um, the hot tub was, was planned um, uh, as a, a later phase, most likely due to budget concerns. And I have to confess that, that was a remnant that got on the plans and I didn't take it off. Um, um, but the thought would be that this is something that is potentially planned down the line. And if we're doing all this work now, maybe it does make sense uh, to include it as part of the application. Um, unless my clients want to differ with that, I think that's where we left it, that it is, it is in fact part of the application.
Okay.
Um, I might add that whether there's a hot tub in that corner of the deck, or whether there's a chair and a table in that corner of the deck, there's still, the hot tub doesn't present necessarily more uh, privacy impact. In fact, I would could argue that when one's in a hot tub, that one's not spending time staring down at other people. One is probably staring up at the stars or something like that. So I'm not sure that there's a, a difference between the use of having a, a hot tub in the corner of the deck or a table and chairs or something like that.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner McLeod, did you have any follow up questions or did that answer?
Um, no, that was it really, for right now.
Um, it's now, it's now back to us commissioners for deliberations. Does anyone want to uh kick things off here?
Um, I can, I'm sorry, I guess. So I have a few comments. One, the, um, so there's privacy issues by both the neighboring landowners in the, and kitty corner too. The one that's farther out on Talbot, that's quite a distance. It's about 80 feet. So I don't think the privacy concerns that they have are really going to be uh, uh, the issue they might be imagining. But the neighbor to the north, that's possible, although I do appreciate the architect's comment that you will be sitting down in a hot tub as opposed to standing up. But is it possible that that fence on that side is just a little higher, maybe 48 inches? I'm not sure how high you'll be when you sit in a hot tub. Will you be sitting above the 42 inch guardrail height? If you just made it a little higher, it'd be more enjoyable probably for the hot tub owner, um, user too. And the privacy issue on the south side, I don't think it's, you're not looking down into a house, you're looking into the yards. I don't think it's as big an issue, but possible, you might put a screen on that, on that south facing edge, but I don't know if it's that necessary. And to Doug's concern about the solar panels, um, I think that sketch on the cover sheet captures it pretty well. You can see it if you're on the other side of the street, but if you're on the side of the, on the sidewalk, on the side of the street with the house, you will just, you won't see the panel. I don't think it would just be a sliver, but you will see the panels on the other side of the street. I did a section while we're sitting here to confirm that. That's what I'm getting. So those are my comments. I, I would vote in favor, but I, I'd push to get a a higher screen wall on the north side to protect the bathroom privacy of the northern resident.
Okay.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Yeah, okay, um, yeah, I appreciate Chris's comments. Um, and um, I think they're valid. And also the applicant or the architect noted that uh, one of the reasons for having the cross gable configuration was to keep the height lower um, farther back. And I noticed in the staff report that the height actually goes up to 20 feet six inches, which I think is relatively low, um, considering our height limit is, is uh, seven and a half feet higher, taller than that. Um, so uh, I, I think my concerns are addressed and that I can support the project. Um, I'll make a couple of comments. Um, I think we had uh, neighbors asking for obscured glass in some of the windows or all the new windows and I, I wouldn't, I don't support that. We haven't done that before. I don't think it's necessary. Um, people, um, I certainly in my own house use blinds where necessary um, to uh, to obscure or to obstruct my views into the neighbors, into the neighbors and the neighbors' views into mine. Um, I think that's what pretty standard practice in Albany. Either blinds or landscaping for uh, views from afar. Um, I'm not very concerned about that. Um, I did, uh, I did do a double take when I saw the hot tub on the second floor. Um, and uh, I, I think I'm okay with it, um, actually, uh, having thought about it. We also had a comment in the, in the, one of the letters that they're worried about the noise from the hot tub, the machinery noise. Um, I can say from experience that that used to be an issue. We have had that uh, 30 years ago. That definitely was an issue in Albany. Um, the hot tubs now that are much quieter, the motors are much quieter. I know that from experience. And um, and I don't think that that is a problem and um, that you will not be able to hear this beyond the property line, which is a good standard, standard to have. The noise, noise impact shouldn't go on beyond the property line. And in this case, they won't. They wouldn't. Um, I have no problem with Chris's suggestion for a somewhat higher um, obscure railing, um, where the hot tub is located on the north side of that, of that deck. Um, I could go either way on that. I'm not sure that's necessary. Um, but I would support, could support that. So I think that's it uh, for me and, and um, based on the discussion we've had, I can support the project.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yeah, I am also prepared to support the project. Um, you know, honestly, I, I probably was prepared to support it on consent calendar. Um, but I did want to, you know, just put in a plug to uh, for the applicant to make sure that they um, pay close attention to the, the drainage issues that the, the neighbor raised. Um, it, it does sound like, I, I don't know if the same conditions apply uh, to this particular property, but um, hopefully uh, those issues can be avoided in construction. And um, I'll also just add that I, I also had the reaction of initially thinking you can see the solar panels. Um, but this is just my subjective um, perception of it, but I, I like seeing the solar panels. Like I, I think it's cool. It's a good, it's a thing we should be encouraging and I, I don't necessarily think of that as a bad um, design feature for what it's worth, so.
Commissioner McLeod?
Uh, yeah, I agree with um, just about everything that's been said so far. I um, you know, agree with Commissioner Kent's observations about privacy issues. And I also, you know, looking at it, I tend to agree with the architect's idea that the hot tub will actually provide some separation with the view to the other side there. Um, it won't be used all that often. Um, you know, I, I could see more of a privacy screen on that side above the hot tub. I think that's a good idea. Um, but hot tubs tend to be used not all that often. And as people usually find out, they use them a lot at the beginning and then very little after a while, so. Um, you know, and I, concerning the cross gable, I I can see this a little awkward in some views, but then when looking again uh, at the front page at that rendering, you know, it looks like it blends in quite nicely from the street. It seems to have the character of the house from there. Um, and looking at the photographs on the last page of the plan set, there looks to be like a very similar type construction at the house next door at 633 with a cross gable that's, you know, just visible from the backyard of, of the applicant's house. So, you know, I can see there is some of that language going on already in the neighborhood and it doesn't seem inappropriate. Um, and I agree with Commissioner Jennings' observations about the solar panels. I love solar panels. I think I need more of them and wherever you want to put them on your roof, I'm happy to support it. Um, I think, I don't think they're ugly. I, you know, I think they're uh, they're great, so I'm
I have to say, I have to say, I worked so hard to hide my solar panels from the street. They're all hidden.
Yeah.
They've gotten prettier over the years. They're better now than they used to be, Doug, so.
Yeah, well, they're fairly sleek and smooth looking and fairly unintrusive and they can be all black and just blend right into a roof, pretty much, so. Um, having said all that, I'm quite happy to support the project. As is.
Great, thanks. Well, I'll just um, add in my quick two cents here. Um, you know, first off, I, I do very much appreciate the homeowner and the architects um, sort of programmatic goals of retaining the architectural quality of the McGregor. Um, you know, I say this every time I think we have McGregor projects come up here. I do feel like Mcgregors are um, some of Albany's gems. Um, and I'm really glad to see when folks are modernizing their homes and expanding them, their homes, that they're respecting that um, architectural value. Um, so I very much want to sort of commend the applicant for that. Um, and you know, Doug, your point about the orientation of the gable was something that I also was looking at and kind of humming and hawing about. Um, you know, I, I'm fine supporting it as proposed. Looking at it, if they were to flip the direction, I'm concerned that there might be too tall of sort of the face um, of the sort of exposed facade. And I actually think having the cross gable come down makes the mass feel a little less tall from the street. Um, and I, you know, I think it can cut both ways. I think having sort of the tile roof line visible in the same orientation would be nice, but I'm, I'm worried the proportionality might change a bit on, um, by flipping the other direction. So I think kind of with that imbalance, I defer to the judgment of the architect on this. I very much appreciate that they've detailed um, true terracotta tile uh, detailing along the um, along the gables edges there. I, I do think in some of our projects, they're either not trimmed out with the terracotta tile or they're using sort of a faux material. And so I appreciate that they're specked as sort of matching the existing actual architectural um, proper terracotta tile. Um, so I like that detail. Um, the hot tub doesn't really bother me. Um, we, you know, it's interesting. It, it seems like a lot of these issues tend to get clustered together um, in, in hearing clumps. And I, at our last hearing, we had a similar issue raised about privacy impacts. Um, and again, what I said last week, and I'll reiterate again, you know, very, I'm very cognizant of folks' concerns about privacy impacts, especially in Albany where we do have um, fairly narrow lots. Um, you know, where we do have the side yards retained. Um, they're still fairly small. All, you know, most houses in Albany can see into their neighbors' homes. Um, that's just sort of the, a fact of our housing stock. Um, and I think what gets really challenging from a, a planning and zoning perspective is we need to be making decisions based on um, sort of regulatory decisions that are based on clear rules that can be applied and, and sort of foreseen by, by future property owners. And privacy is really a very personal issue. One person's um, sort of privacy impact is not an impact in the slightest to another person. And I think it's really hard to establish rules around privacy when it's much more, it's a very sort of emotional reaction to things rather than, you know, uh, something that can be quantified like shadow or, or things of that were massing. Um, so when it comes to privacy, you know, my suggestion is, um, you know, treat your property to your tolerances. And if you need to put up um, you know, taller hedges or taller fencing or, you know, have your window covering so that you feel comfortable in your property, I think that responsibility should fall on everyone. Um, I know in my own home, this room I'm sitting in right now, I can see into probably three different of my neighbor's homes as we speak. Um, it's equally awkward for me to look in their homes as it is for them to feel me looking in their homes. So I think we all sort of behave as responsible adults and you know, shut our blinds and don't look into our neighbor's homes when we're uh, in our home. So, um, with that, that's, that's my little uh, commentary on the issue. Um, but overall, I think in terms of the standards that are before us on this project, I'm ready to also support the project. I think it's a well-designed um, architecturally integrated addition. Um, and with that, um, that concludes my remarks. Commissioner Donaldson, yes?
Uh, one last thought on this. Um, we had a comment about drainage, a little concern about drainage. Um, and I want to point out to uh, the commenter, if they're still listening, that the the standard conditions we have will address the drainage conditions nine and 10, I think they are. And um, uh, the city engineer, the public works department will be looking closely at that. And um, that, that, that can be a very important issue and, and uh, will be addressed um, through our standard procedures and part of the, they're part of the uh, permit if it's issued.
Thanks for pointing that out. Um, with that, if there are no other comments, um, would one of my fellow commissioners like to make a motion?
Um, well, Chris, do you want to move?
Sure, I'll, I'll move to pass up, get to the, get to the number here. Um, planning addition, planning application 629, uh, sorry, 2020 dash 10, 14, planning zoning SR 629 Talbot Drive, PRCUP. Is that correct?
So this is item four dash four on the consent calendar.
Oh, not correct. Yeah, that was correct. I had it right, yeah. Sorry, I read the full version, but planning application 20 dash 042 is our review for spark reduction, unconditional use permit.
Chris, could I ask, do you want to add something about the balcony?
Um, right, with the caveat that we, you put a uh, 48 inch privacy screen on the north end of the balcony.
Okay.
It'd be six inches higher than the standard 42 inch rail.
Okay.
With that, do we have a second?
Um, I would second it.
Okay, with that, um, we'll call the vote then. Commissioner McLeod?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Uh, and I vote yes on that motion as well. So that motion passes five to zero. Um, and with that, we would, uh, there are story pulls up, I believe, on this project. And so with that, we'll ask um, folks to leave the story pulls up through the 14 day appeal period.
Before we uh, move on to the next item, um, we actually need to redo the motion for 1152 Portland. Um, and Doug is recused on that item due to um, the proximity of his residence. And so in the previous motion, I believe he made the emotion. We actually have to have a clean motion um, from those that are able to, to vote on the project.
Okay, so can we just pull out a motion then on item four dash three with Commissioner Donaldson recused and call that item?
Yeah, well, if somebody wants to make the motion and we'll redo the vote, um, that should be sufficient.
Okay. Um, great, with that, we'll go back to item four dash three. So do we have a motion for approval on item four dash three, 1152 Portland?
Sure, I will move again uh, to approve item four dash three.
Great. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, with that, we'll call the vote. Uh, Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner McLeod?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well with Commissioner Donaldson recused, so that item vote uh, passes four to zero with Commissioner Donaldson recused. All right, um, if we are then good to move on, why don't we move on to where does that bring us? Item four dash five on the consent calendar for 934 Pomona Avenue?
Uh, yes, I'm the one I think that uh, uh, Ray, Ray said I had questions on this and I, and I do. Um, I uh, I don't really have a problem with the project itself. I wanted to talk, and I hope the applicant is hearing me, um, about the drainage issue. Um, I noticed on the plans that uh, you called for constructing a dissipation basin at the back of the lot that would catch the runoff um, and dissipate it into the ground. Um, I, I just, for your information, um, I have experience with this from a project of my own. Um, and two, I have two comments to make. One, um, I tried to operate a dissipation basin in a place we have on Cornell for some 15 years or so, and they don't work very well in Albany's clay soils. And um, so a couple of years ago, uh, when we did some remodeling there, um, we talked to the city and we decided to put in a sump pump. Um, and that is the better way to go. It's not ma, it does require maintenance. It's not, it is a mechanical thing. Um, but uh, the dissipation basin worked in drought years, but in wet years, we just had a big bog back there. And um, if you try that, you would, I think you could risk the magnolia tree damaging that's back there now. Um, and it just might not work for you. Um, it's very likely that under conditions nine and 10 in the staff report that the city engineer will look at this and say, yes, you need to that the city engineer will look at this and say, yes, you need to bring the runoff out to the curb, which is now pretty much standard procedures in Albany. It's not cheap, probably an extra three to five thousand dollars added to the cost of your project. But I, I, I think it's the right way to go, and I can say that from personal experience. So that was my comment I wanted to make on this application. And I don't have any other further concerns or questions about it. And I believe it was on the consent calendar and I'm prepared to move if no one else has any comments or if there's no public comments.
And I do believe, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, that there is, maybe not at this point. I thought there was a hand raised to comment on this item, a neighbor comment. But why don't we go ahead? Staff, did you have a presentation or would you like us to open this up to the applicant and public comment?
I think we don't.
Public comment.
Okay, why don't we go ahead then and open it up for public comment? And if there, after public comment, if there is any, we'll go ahead and give the project sponsor a few minutes to give a brief presentation and respond to any of those comments. So with that, Chris, are there any hand raised, hands raised to speak on this item?
Yes, we have Jeremiah again to speak. Jeremiah, you have three minutes starting now.
Hi, thank you again. So yeah, there's a correspondence, a neighbor, you know, that shares a driveway kind of thing. And it seems that, it seems that you guys just keep passing these and don't really have a concern for the neighbor's opinion. That's what I'm kind of learning, all these meetings, every time. You guys just keep passing it for the owners and and it's like, it's like we've got to care about our community, right? It's like, why even have public comment? Why even have a correspondence? Why even have a neighbor even voice her opinion? If you're just kind of not even really listen to them and you're just going to go with the owner every time. I mean, what a poor lady. She was just, she lived there for so long, you know, she's elderly, you know, that's, you guys are doing elder abuse. You know, just not letting this, you guys are just trampling over a senior citizen. You know, she's all about privacy and she just, she likes her redwood trees and all this construction, you know? And so this one, you got another one. And watch, you guys are just going to pass it again, you know, and all these contractors and all this money. You guys don't even consider, what about the street traffic? And I'll tell you what, that, it's just like all this construction debris at the Albany saunas. There's, there's three screws in the middle of the sidewalk and a silver pipe. What happens if a kid steps on the screw? All these construction sites are so unregulated by the city. You guys don't even monitor them. You let the construction crew and the homeowners do whatever they want. And it's unsafe. There's no checks and balances here. I mean, go look right now in the corner of Jackson and Solano, right in front of the sauna. There are two gray screws still there. I was going to pick them up. But I left them there. It's so sad. So you guys got to have regulations for this construction and these are hot intersections. So what about parking? Parking's an issue. Now you've got all these trucks pulling in all these driveways and it's going to be raining. It's going to be winter time. So please consider the neighbors, you know, please just table this and have more neighbor reviews. This is getting out of hand. You guys just, it's all about construction. It's all about, you guys are all about the money. And like you said, you don't even care what the lady thinks. You downplayed her emotions like, oh, it's just a feeling she has. Well, feelings are real. You know, what about your feelings? What if you had a tree that she, you know, you planted or something? Maybe the homeowner could put up their own lattice or whatever, some vines to cover on their property, their building. That should be a policy to where the homeowner should cover up.
Time's up. I see no other public speakers.
Okay, with that, is the applicant available? Would the applicant like to have a few minutes to respond?
Yes, Christina Ratcliffe, the property owner and applicant is available. Christina, you have three minutes starting now.
Okay, thank you so much, Chair, Planning Commission staff. I really appreciate this opportunity. My husband Noah and I have lived in Albany for twenty years. This addition has been being planned and saved for, for about just that amount of time. We put a lot of thought into this. My day job is the planning manager for City of Vallejo. It feels really different when you're talking on this side about your own home, I have to say. We put a lot of thought into it. We worked with our architect on complimenting the existing design of the home. I love the design of the architecture of the home. The round columns on the outside are like one of my favorite features. We've worked with, reached out to our neighbors. We, one of our neighbors to the south had an issue with the placement of our tankless water heater. We've agreed to like move that to the back or in the crawl space, whichever works out. We haven't decided that. And have worked with our neighbor. We've resolved the issue that she was afraid of driveway being impacted and completely blocked during construction. That's not the case. It was a miscommunication on our part. It's a shared driveway. We've worked it out for twenty years. We can work it out going through this. I know she still has concerns about privacy impacts from our second story balcony that faces the west. She is our neighbor to the north. It's a small balcony off the master bedroom. I think it does not impose any additional undue impacts on privacy. We're very happy to have some vegetative screening on that side of the balcony, the north side, if that is the commission's desire. And if you have any questions, I'm very happy to answer it. And our architect is also on the line, should you need to ask her something. Thank you.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any remaining questions for the project sponsor? With that, we can go ahead and turn it back to our deliberations if there are no other questions.
This was a consent calendar item. I'm prepared to move forward with it. I made my, made my little speech about drainage. So I would move approval unless any other commissioners have comments or questions of planning application twenty oh four four, including design review for a two-level addition at nine three four Pomona.
Do we have a second?
I can second.
Second by Commissioner Jennings. On that vote, Commissioner McLeod? Oh, sorry, you were on mute. Did you, was that an I?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Kent?
Yes, but can I make a comment, just a simple comment here, maybe it's the wrong place. But I think the design really does respect the privacy to the neighbor of the north. It's a small little balcony. And I don't think it exposes the neighbor's lot to the extent that they appear to say so in the letter. So I think they should, I, I think it's a sensitive design. I just wanted to add that. So yes, I do vote for it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that item passes five to zero. And since this was a two-level addition, there are story pulls and that, those two should stay up through the fourteen day appeal period. With that, I think that now brings us back to Jackson Street, if I'm keeping track here, staff. So item four dash two, planning application twenty dash zero three one, design review, parking reduction for a single story addition at eight forty-four Jackson.
And I have to recuse myself. Do I just, what do I do? I just turn off my camera for the moment or I think so, right?
That's the approach during COVID is to just turn off your video.
Okay.
Great. So Commissioner Kent is recused. And with that, we will kick it off here first with a presentation from staff and we will do a full hearing on this. Oh, Commissioner Jennings, you too are recusing yourself, right? Okay, great. So we are down to three commissioners for the public to know, and we will now begin with the staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Once again, this is planning application twenty dash zero three one, design review amendment for, and parking reduction for a single story rear addition located at eight four four Jackson Street. Some background on the property. The subject property is a five thousand square foot lot with a two-bedroom, one bathroom, one thousand one hundred seventeen square foot house built in nineteen fourteen. On May twenty seventh this year, the planning commission approved planning application twenty seventeen design review and conditional use permit for a single story rear addition at eight four four Jackson Street. The entitlements include design review for a net addition of one hundred fifty square feet to accommodate a new bedroom, half bathroom and laundry area. And also a conditional use permit to horizontally extend the existing non-conforming north wall located three feet, one inches from the property line where five feet is required per the zoning code. On July twenty eighth, twenty twenty, this year, the applicant also submitted a application to amend the previously approved project, which was PA twenty seventeen, through the administrative design review process. On September twenty first of this year, the hearing was scheduled and staff received a formal written objection to the proposed amendment. Therefore, due to the objection, the project was scheduled for the next available planning and zoning commission hearing for public review and action, which is tonight, October fourteenth. And here is a street view of the property as it sits today. Project request, the applicant is seeking design review approval to amend the previously approved design. The project scope includes a net increase of one hundred and six square feet in area at the rear of the home. The increased area will result in a full bathroom and closet area, which was previously proposed to be a half bathroom. The area of work is proposed on the south end of the overall addition approximately seventeen feet away from the northern property line. This would result in a three-bedroom, two-bathroom, one thousand three hundred seventy-three square foot house with a maximum height of eighteen feet. And just really quick, here is a snapshot, an exhibit provided by the project applicant showing on the left, the previously approved addition, which was a net increase of one hundred fifty square feet. And then on the right, the one hundred and six additional area, a square feet of area added to the previously proposed addition. You'll note the dotted lines here, which delineate what's proposed to be added to the previously proposed and approved addition. Here is the existing rear elevation of the house as it sits today. Here's what was previously proposed and approved. And here's what's proposed before you tonight. Parking reduction. There is one off-street parking space currently in the existing detached garage, which is located at the street front. The cumulative area of the home with both applications proposed is two hundred fifty square feet. This threshold triggers one off-street parking requirement for the property. Due to the existing configuration of the onsite, the required parking space cannot be accommodated. The applicant is seeking a parking reduction to waive the single parking space requirement triggered with the project scope. Correspondence is received. Staff has received correspondences from the adjacent neighbor listing concerns with possible tree damage associated with the proposed construction. Privacy concerns as well as concerns with the overall addition encroaching into the setback area once again. All correspondences received were included in the agenda packet and emailed to the commission directly. All correspondences are now part of the public record and can be accessed online. The project is categorically exempt from secret review per section fifteen three oh three. And staff recommends that the planning and zoning commission review the, review and approve the proposed project subject to the findings and conditions of approval. And with that, staff is happy to answer any questions. And I believe the applicant is on the panelist list. Thank you.
Chris, I did have a quick question for you. So on the, is the parking reduction before us today or is that part of the original approval?
So essentially, because the previous approval was not constructed, and with the new proposal before you tonight, the total area being added to the existing home is two hundred fifty-six square feet. Per the code, any additions over two hundred forty square feet require an additional parking requirement. And so that's why we're providing the findings before the commission tonight.
So it's the cumulative addition between what was previously reviewed that was under the threshold plus this one, triggers the need for a parking reduction?
Correct.
Okay, so it really is that the project is effectively being reviewed in its totality, not this small subsequent piece effectively. Thank you, that's helpful. Are there any other questions of staff before we open it up for the applicant's presentation?
Well, I, yeah, I guess as a point of a similar idea, I mean, if we required changes to this that weren't acceptable to the applicant, would they still, could they still just go back to their previous approval and build their previous project? Or is this like a whole new review where whatever we decide today is, you know, what will be applied going forward to this project?
If the property owner and applicant wanted to revert back to their original approved design, they could move forward with the building permit process for that previous approval of twenty seventeen.
Okay, that stands as approved and we wouldn't be doing anything retroactive to change any of that approval. Okay.
Okay, that wraps all the questions. Why don't we go ahead and open it up for the project applicant to give us a brief presentation? Then we will open it up for public comment.
Buddy Williams, I see you in the panelists. You have three minutes to speak, starting, or five minutes, starting now. Sorry, we can restart the timer. Buddy, you can start now.
Yeah, can you hear me? Yes, good show. Anywhere, one, my name is Buddy Williams. I'm the applicant for the eight four four Jackson addition. On May twenty seventh this year, we had the staff report was published, which recommended approve the original proposed project for the net addition of one hundred fifty square feet to turn a small two-bedroom, one-bath house into a small three-bedroom, one-and-a-half bath house. The analysis and findings assembled by planning staff found the proposed addition conformed with the general plan housing element and all relevant residential design guidelines, criteria. So the project was initially on the commission's consent calendar and it was pulled because of the neighbor's opposition. It was determined by the planning commission at the public hearing previously that the impacts to the adjacent neighbor who wrote of an objection did not warrant a denial of the use of the applicant's private property. And in fact, the very modest one-story addition in terms of size was reasonable proposal. Following the hearing, the planning department gave a notice of action passed by a three-o vote. And so I'd like to explain the process in which we took from that hearing to today. And I'll tell you why it's relevant here in a sec. In June and July, my wife and I ordered an appraisal, secured financing, and initiated a contractor to look at the work. So given the home's appraisal, we were able to borrow a slightly larger amount. And the contractor's numbers were also coming within striking distance of what we've been available to work with. And since we've been sitting on the house plans for three months, we started to look at ways to make the addition more efficient and getting the best value for our dollar. And we determined that having a large hallway, which is in that orange diagram, the one in the middle of the previous application, having a large hallway and two French doors in close proximity to each other in that kitchen area, exiting the kitchen was a bit of an overkill and not making the best use of space. And we decided that reconfiguring this area for a slightly larger bedroom and full bath was more efficient use of space. And given this updated knowledge, we applied and paid for a planning amendment to the original application. So personal finance and family dynamics are typically not a part of the commission's discussion or remit, but it's pointed out here because the neighbor's latest objection letter gives the accusation of unfair and impartial judgment by the planning commission and deception and distortion on my part. So I reject that accusation. And I would assume the commissioners would reject the implication of using quote deception, distortion and bad faith during that original hearing. So we are not quote encroaching more extensively on regulated setback areas. And so for us, one of the most important questions for consideration by the commission is, what additional impacts does this revised plan have when compared to the original scheme? So you've already approved the original scheme. And what else are we proposing in addition to that? And the answer is two feet. We're asking for an additional two feet of setback, which that portion is set more than seventeen feet away from the neighbor's property line from what we had approved originally. The additional square footage requested, one hundred six square feet over the originally approved plan is primarily on the south side of the addition away from the northern neighbor. The architectural character and features are the same. The existing findings are the same. The setback to the north, three foot one from the property line is the same, three foot one. The setback to the north, three foot one from the property line, is the same, three foot one, which would align with the existing non-conforming north wall, which is the basis for the request for a conditional use. We, along with the comments by the commissioners at the previous hearing, agree that pushing the addition to a five-foot setback would unnecessarily break up the roof forms, increase costs, and create an awkward transition from the existing home to the new addition. The neighbor hasn't had the benefit of seeing the revised plans before writing their second letter of comments, and I'm getting the impression that they are not cognizant, that they were only asking for additional two feet of building depth. The bedroom walls, north and west, are still in the same location, and there are still no windows proposed on the northern side face of the addition. It is still a modest project. So this project will also affect our livelihoods and bring major disruption to our home scene. We're two employed people earning a living working from home, as well as homeschooling our two children all in the same space. How exciting. So I truly regret not having presented this idea originally, and may have saved time and energy. Proposal is 11 feet short of the maximum setback, and 10 feet under the height limit, and over 1,100 square feet shy of the maximum FAR allowed for this parcel. And yes, this proposal project could have been a two-story, 28-foot-tall addition that extends within 20 feet of the property line, which is done quite often in Albany. Last 10 seconds, I have one more sentence. We're asking for a single-story house addition that extends a total of eight foot three. The original submission was six foot three beyond the back of the existing house. And I want to repeat again, the additional impact of the sightline of the northern neighbors for this revised proposal is two feet. And I encourage the Planning Commission to vote yes for this residential addition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Time's up. I see Jeremiah in the audience to speak again. Jeremiah, you have three minutes, starting now.
It's okay, you can keep running the timer, it's all good. Hey, um, so I just had a few questions about ADA accessibility. Accessibility, you know, and certain things like that. And, you know, construction does cause a lot of noise and cause a lot of dust. And I've already seen these construction sites, right on Solano and Jackson. I mean, screws everywhere, and that's commercial. Now, now this project's in residential. So now you're where families are and schoolchildren running up and down that sidewalk, barefoot, dogs walking barefoot. So what are you going to do, close down the sidewalk for the construction? So everybody's got to walk around in the middle of the street? You know? You guys just keep approving these things and keep falling back in these same circles. You know, you want to put up a building, and she talks about the redwood tree. Well, maybe now this redwood tree has some limbs to be cut, but it's on her property. You know, these neighbors keep saying their voice, you know, they keep voicing their opinion. And it seems like guys don't listen about privacy. And it's like you don't care about people's feelings or emotions. So that means, that means you guys are like robots. You guys don't have emotions or feelings, you don't care about others. It's like you don't care about the community's voice, you know? Poor lady, she's a senior citizen, she's got a difficult time speaking up for herself. You know, she could use an advocate, maybe that's what I'm here for. You know, and all these schoolchildren that have no idea what's going on. And they're out playing with their friends, and they step on a screw. Because all these grownups are all about money and transactions and contracts, and we've got to slow down a little bit, and what's Albany turning into, you guys? Albany, I know, we love and care about our neighbors. And we're more cautious than this. You guys are so quick just to approve something, approve something, without having those checks and balances of safety. You know, you guys took safety out of this whole committee. You know? This would be Transportation and Safety Committee. Guys took the whole word "safety" out. That's so sad. So please, please table this, get more. And if they'd known for 20 years, maybe they should have said something, you know, before last week. You know, someone knows about something for 20 years, why they keep it a secret?
Time's up. I see. We have two more speakers. First up is Benjamin Hensler. Benjamin, you have three minutes, starting now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I actually am the neighbor to the south of 844 Jackson Street, the southwest, so one house up from the corner of Solano and Jackson. A family of four, lived there for 10 years. I strongly support this proposal and project. I think it'll make a significant improvement to the property. The property owner has already showed over the last 10 years, they've made extensive improvements to both the exterior and the interior of the home that have benefited the neighborhood. And I think the proposal really meets a real need, not just for the property owner's family, but for the community as a whole. And that is that it addresses the mismatch in Albany, as everyone is well aware, between the size of our individual houses and our housing stock and the average size of our families with children who move here or, you know, decide to stay here to raise children for the schools. We have a lot of two-bedroom houses occupied by families with two kids. And when it comes time for an additional children to have, you know, two bedrooms, it's, you know, good for the community as a whole, it's good for those families, it's good for the property owners that will come after that these be converted to three-bedroom units. And in this case, I think we can be confident that these owners, who are both architects themselves, can be counted on to execute this with a high degree of quality and a high level of design. You know, obviously, the construction process is going to be inconvenient, as all construction is, for both the owners and for the neighbors. But, you know, having had a similar experience at my neighbor to the west, where there was an extensive remodel by a flipper, where it was clear that there was not a commitment to quality, there was not a commitment to design because, you know, because it was going to be sold afterwards. In this case, we have an owner, whose architect themselves, plans to occupy it with their family. And I think we can be counted on that they will be, execute this in a responsible and manner that's going to be of value to the entire community. And so I really urge upon you that you approve this project. Thank you.
Okay. I see one speaker, one additional speaker, Carrie Fowler. Carrie, you have three minutes, starting now.
Thank you for considering my written statements and my comments this evening regarding the new, large, and impactful home addition of 256 square feet of new building at 844 Jackson Street. Four and a half months ago, on May 27th, the applicant Buddy and his wife Madison told this commission that they had outgrown their home, that they needed a third bedroom so they could separate their growing boys, and that despite their stated desire to build much bigger, they could only afford 150 square feet of new construction. Further, they insisted they could not realize their 150-square-feet project unless they were permitted to encroach on the regulated setback areas that separate our properties. I presented reasonable, realistic, and relevant objections based on significant adverse impact if setback areas were allowed to be developed. Despite this, Project PA 2001-7 was granted the desired variance with a dissenting vote on May 27. Just a few months later, Buddy and Madison have now abandoned PA 2001-7 in favor of a much larger, more impactful project nearly double the size. They are thus making it clear that the foundational argument for the May 27th variance, no ways and means for a project larger than 150 square feet, is no longer applicable or relevant. Their new 256-square-foot project is completely contrary to the reasons given to obtain the variance on May 27. Now that they have the ways and means for an additional 106 square feet of development, they can surely realize their whole project without encroachment into setback areas. It is neither fair nor appropriate to transfer without review the variance for 150-square-foot project to a 256-square-foot project that does not qualify for or require encroachment on setback areas. I appeal now to the PZC to disallow encroachment into the regulated setback areas and to not grant the parking variance until this issue has been resolved. The proposal now before you should be viewed as a new standalone whole project. If the parking variance is based on the whole project, then the issue of a setback variance should also apply to the whole project, not its two pieces. Applicant's piecemeal approach is not appropriate and should not be approved. I am seeking for the setback regulations to be honored. I am not trying to block Buddy and Madison from realizing their desires for a much larger home. I do request, however, that they leave all regulated setback areas between our properties undeveloped and proceed in a way that does not cause harm to me, my husband, and our property. We are trying to protect our interests and those of our property. We are seeking a reasonable resolution wherein they get the square footage they desire, and we derive the significant benefits of an undeveloped five feet of setback between their new construction and the property line. Thank you.
I see no other speakers.
Okay, great, thanks, Chris. With that, no additional speakers, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and we will turn it back to the commission for deliberations and comments. Do any commissioners want to, there's only three of us here tonight. Either of you two want to kick things off here?
Go ahead, Commissioner McClellan.
Yeah, okay, I can get started. You know, I can understand the neighbors' arguments, that they would prefer that it be two feet further away. At the same time, you know, we grant these non-conforming extensions of existing walls on a very regular basis. So it is not something unusual, it is not something arbitrary, it is not something that we, you know, do on rare occasions, it's pretty common in Albany. Truth be told, I got into tension of that sort on my house to go at three foot one from the property line up a second story. And nobody seems to be harmed or hurt by that. So, you know, while I could see that the project could be pushed over two feet, you know, I can see that it is possible to do that, so I'm a little ambivalent about this. And it could be done without, you know, any major hardship, I think, on the applicant's part. So I am a little bit of ambivalent about it, but at the same time, I disagree with the neighbor saying that the project is more impactful or more harmful to them. Christopher asked if you could present or prepare a slide, a comparison of the north elevations. Do you have that? Or, you know, from the neighbor's point of view, there's really nothing changing on the property line between this project and the previous project. So, you know, I'm a little skeptical of the arguments that this is creating increased harm or increased, you know, impact to the neighbor. It's basically essentially the same thing from the previous version in terms of what the neighbor will see, which we already approved. There's a small extension on the bottom, but it's further back. It's 17 feet from the property line, like the applicant said. So, you know, I'm not really too inclined to change my vote from last time. I think having a three-bedroom home on this lot is entirely appropriate. I think the house will be better for it, I think property values will increase. Could we go back to the rear elevations, please, Christopher?
Yes, one moment, I'll have to pull it up.
Yeah, I mean, just in terms of design, I think the previous view of the previous rear elevation looked better to me. I think the lack of the doors in the new version is not an improvement, or the lack of some kind of window there. So, you know, I don't think the design, you know, in the sense of what the rear elevation is, has improved. I think that previous elevation looked better than the new one. But at the same time, it's the back of the house, and really, only the occupants are going to see it. But I think that looks awfully blank, especially on the right side. Could use a little more architectural interest. So I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think the project has really materially changed all that much since the previous version in terms of what the neighbor to the north is going to see or experience. So I'm really inclined to continue my support of this. We do allow non-conforming extensions all the time, this is not something that's unusual. So I'm also not opposed to the parking exemption. I think we've also been much more lenient in that respect all over due to the voters' change of the mandate from two to one, and giving the council more leeway in terms of how parking is required. So I think we're trending towards requiring fewer parking spaces. It was a much bigger issue 20 years ago, 15 years ago. You know, and as far as noise and impacts during construction, well, we don't have any legal basis to postpone or, you know, stop construction because people work at home, it's just a fact of life, that it's something that, you know, it's going to happen. And it's temporary, and hopefully is over with quickly enough before it's too big of a problem. But it's also regulated by the building department. Hours of construction are regulated, noise levels are regulated, dust is regulated by the building department. So if there are issues during construction, that's the way to address it, is through the building department. I don't know, let's see. You know, I think that's enough for me right now. Others have some comments, I'm happy to listen. All right, thanks.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Yeah, sure. Let's see, where can I start? I actually voted against this last time, is my recollection. And I did that because I do have a problem with the horizontal extension of the non-conforming side yard setback. I've been thinking about that more, it was kind of a protest vote. And I wasn't really protesting against this project as much as I was the fact that this commission has just changed the zoning ordinance within the last couple of years with respect to those. I voted no on that. I think we should be much more judicious generally about extending non-conforming setbacks in a horizontal direction. But, you know, I was on the losing side on that. And I think now the rules allow applicants to do that, and that this project was carried forward with that under the existing rules. So I'm probably going to change my vote on this one this time, and go ahead and say, you know, that's the way it is in Albany now. We do allow horizontal extensions of non-conforming setbacks. I don't think this is bad faith on the part of the applicant, and coming forward here, I find the applicant's story very plausible, that they did get a good appraisal, which is not uncommon, home prices are really soaring in Albany. And they decided that they could afford to do more. I think that's completely reasonable, and I believe them entirely when they say that. I also think this is a pretty small project. And it really is a very modest addition to the home. And so... so uh, it, it is not one that pushes our rules in any way, except possibly with that pretty large, pretty long um, uh, non-con uh, uh, extension of horizontal extension of the side yard setback. The parking reduction, um, I have looked closely at the findings. I think all the findings can be made. I really don't think that we could require another off-street parking space. Um, uh, that would be feasibly require one on this project. So I can support the parking reduction application. And uh, and, 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 and so my conclusion is um, I can support the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Donaldson. Um, and I'll just chime in here. So I think a couple of things for me. I want to be clear about this and, and certainly staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but the conditional use is not before us. The conditional use is closed. It's been approved. What's before us is the parking exception and design review for the net new addition that's being proposed. So I'm going to focus my comments, assuming that's accurate. I'm going to be focusing my comments on those two items. Um, I completely understand that um, the vote last time was not the, the direction that some folks were wanting. Um, but, but to me, that, that item is closed. So, um, first up on the parking exception, um, sort of my opinion on this, and, and this is where sort of I have often a challenge with, with some of our parking requirements. You know, when you look at the project previously that didn't require a parking exception in the current project, there's not really a, a delta of intensity that's caused by this project. So the previous project had a third bedroom. Um, you know, presumably the, the occupancy demand and sort of demand for vehicles with a three-bedroom house is the same as the occupancy demand for vehicles of the current three-bedroom house. Um, you know, there's a little bit bigger closet. There's um, an extra shower. I don't think that shower and, you know, maybe slightly larger closet, slightly larger pantry um, is going to affect vehicular demand in any which way. So I understand that there's a line in the sand in the code that says, you know, an aggregate addition of a certain amount of square feet triggers it. You know, if you're under, you don't need it. If you're over, you do. But to me, kind of look at like what, what is the delta demand here? And I just, I think this project solidly meets the findings in the sense that um, I, I don't see any increased demand on A with a, with a third bedroom altogether. And I think the, again, the family's presentation here kind of solidified it. Two small children in the house. Um, they are there whether this project is approved or not. Um, it isn't going to impact the number of cars on the street. So I'm, I am very amenable to supporting the parking reduction. I think it makes a lot of sense. And then the second question before us tonight is one of design review. Um, and although I, I agree with Commissioner McLeod's comments that um, the rear facade with the French doors was a lovely um, rear addition. Um, you can tell that, you know, an architect has designed this and I do appreciate um, sort of the that aspect. I also don't think it's that detrimental to, to get rid of the French doors. If anything, if the neighbors are having sort of sensitivity to noise um, and sort of those sorts of impacts on their property, I actually think removing the doors, which likely those would be the primary doors that people would go in and out of the backyard from rather than the side doors. Um, it may cut down on the amount of, of noise that's coming in and out of the backyard. So if there is sort of with that in mind, I actually think the French doors can cut both ways a little bit. Um, I also don't think we typically um, put the same level of design review attention particularly on a one-story um, rear facade. This isn't something that's really going to be visible from any neighboring properties. Um, with your typical rear yard fences up, I think it's going to be really hard to see it all. Um, so to me, it passes those two metrics of both um, parking exception findings as well as design review. Um, again, noting that the conditional use is not before us. So with that, I think this is a very modest project. Um, you know, I, I appreciate the fact that the applicant is citing the addition in sort of the modest way that it is. This property could be built out much more extensively. Um, and I think this is an, an appropriate trade-off in location um, for where the massing is cited. Uh, I don't, uh, no one likes to live next door to construction. I completely understand. Um, it's, to me, it's kind of the unnecessary evil of um, of development. Um, and people, um, you know, of us keeping our older housing stock and the beautiful architecture that we have in Albany necessitates people upgrading it. Unfortunately, upgrading equals construction. Um, and so it is something that we have to live through. The city does have conditions of approval that are associated with moderating that construction and having hours of operation and performance measures around construction. Um, so I'm confident that those conditions of approval um, are appropriate for um, for handling those concerns um, as we do on, on sort of all projects. So with that, I'm, I'm also supportive and ready to approve this project. If I can ask one of you gentlemen if um, I think we are ready to move forward.
Ben, you want me to?
Sure.
Yeah. So um, I guess I can move approval of planning application twenty oh three one. Design review amendment and parking reduction for a single-story rear addition at eight four four Jackson Street.
I will second.
Okay, on then on that motion, Commissioner Donaldson.
Uh, I.
Commissioner McLeod.
I.
Uh, and I vote I as well. So that motion passes three to zero with Commissioners Jennings and Kent recused on this project. Um, and with that, um, I don't know if uh, staff of either of you can ping our fellow commissioners to turn to, to come back online here. Um, and as soon as they're back, we can open it up for um, item five on the agenda. Um, but why don't we just uh, wait a moment so we can have our two commissioners uh, rejoin? All right. It looks like we have Commissioner Jennings and Commissioners Kent back now. Um, so with that, we are on item five on our agenda. Item five is general public comment. General public comment is for members of the public wishing to address the commission on an item that is not otherwise agendized on today's agenda. Um, and each speaker is limited to three minutes. Chris, do we have anyone who is wishing to speak under general public comments?
Yes, we have Jeremiah one more time. Jeremiah, you have three minutes starting now.
Hi, this is Jeremiah. Public comment, thank you. Uh, so, hey, Commissioner Kent, your uh, microphone, it sounds like you're like in an airplane or something like it's real, it's just, you know, positive suggestion. You might want to get a different microphone or a different headset because uh, what we, what everybody hears is like, I don't know, it sounds like an airplane video game. You know, it's like you're.
Yeah, thanks. I've heard that. So it is a setting I got to fix.
Yeah, some sort of echo. Um, so.
Perhaps that's better.
No, it's not. You got to get a whole new headset, buddy. It's okay. Um, so anyway. Yeah, um, so, yeah, so I, you know, this is public comment here. I'm trying to figure out all this stuff, right? Seems like you're not, you know, listening to neighbors. You know, and all these rooftop things. You know, all these and all this water up high and hot tubs and I don't know, you guys, it's just, it doesn't seem like, it seems like you always go with the owner, the homeowner. Like whatever they kind of want to do. You know, I understand you guys have meetings. You got to pass agendas and all these sort of things, but um, you know, we got height requirements and, and all this stuff. It's just, I just want to keep voicing, you know, these, these neighbors are they're voicing their opinion because they care about their property the way it is and the neighbors just kind of want to do what they want. So, you got to consider all these things, you know, construction debris for safety. You know, you guys just saw on the motion, go ahead. All these things versus for safety and just keep in mind, you know, regulations like um, fire code and uh, you know, safety and and all these things for the public, you know, just neighbors, because we just want to keep Albany together. And we want to keep Albany close and you know, it's not necessarily elder abuse, what you're doing to the neighbor, but you know, she's a senior citizen. And how many people are going to speak up for her? It's like you guys are taking advantage of the moment. You know, anybody could just go do this. But it takes, it's, it takes a heart or a caring person to do the right thing. You know, it's just not about the money. It's how you use the money to do the right thing. And I don't think there is a necessary evil. Why do, why does there have to be evil in all this? You know, doing anything evil is, is not good. You know, and you said that. And that hurts my feelings that someone from the city on these commissions.
Okay, time's up.
Are there any other folks uh, wishing to speak under general public comment?
No, there are not.
Okay, uh, with that, we'll move on to item six on the agenda. Uh, these are agendas, agendized as possible action items. So first up, we have item six dash one. Planning application twenty dash zero three nine, design review and conditional use for new coffee kiosk at ten thirty-five East Shore Highway. With that, we'll turn it over to staff for a presentation.
Yes, thank you. Really quick, uh, once again, this is a design review and conditional use permit for the new coffee kiosk proposed at ten thirty-five East Shore Highway. Some background on the property. The subject property is a forty-five thousand, six hundred twenty-eight square foot lot with a eight thousand, three hundred seven square foot vehicle showroom and service center, which was built in twenty fifteen. The subject property is zoned CMX. The original project was approved by the commission on June twelfth, twenty twelve and included design review and conditional use permits um, for the new facility, which was PA eleven dash zero five five. Here's the street view of the property as it sits today. This is right next to Target here in Albany. Project requests, the applicant is seeking design review approval for the proposed two hundred square foot coffee kiosk structure. And additionally, a conditional use permit for the proposed drive-through use associated with operation of the kiosk, I mean, the coffee business. Here's a proposed site plan. You'll note the coffee kiosk in the center along with the order delivery pickup lane with six spaces, six vehicle spaces for queuing up. And here's a proposed three D rendering provided by the applicant as well, detailing those architectural details of the structure itself. And a proposed elevation. Design review, the proposed coffee kiosks is um, proposed to be two hundred square feet with a drive, drive-through service um, proposed. The structure is is proposed to be a maximum of sixteen feet with their, a thirty-foot flagpole. Modifications that exist in parking lot circulation and new electrical charging stations are proposed as well. Design details, the interior of the structure is designed to accommodate coffee drink preparation only. The building will be clad in corrugated metal paneling and operable, operable windows, metal sun shades, skylights, photo videotapes and curved signage. Business operation. Drink selection and payment um, processes are proposed to take place via online app. The baristas are then proposed to bring drinks to the customers at the delivery pickup lane. There is, the applicant anticipates minimal interaction between um, customers in the drive-up window. Business hours are proposed to be eight thirty to three thirty PM Monday through Saturday. And a maximum of two employees are proposed to operate the kiosk at any one time. Conditional use permit. A conditional use permit is required for all new uses in the CMX zoning district per section twenty twelve zero four zero of the Albany Municipal Code. Regulations um, contained within the code are are specific to uh, drive, what, drive-through uses and the findings were included in the staff report, which include um, findings for pedestrian circulation, drive-through lane dimensions, screening of drive-through aisles, stacking areas, menu board regulations and the building location itself. Parking, there is an existing parking lot for the service center and showroom building on-site. Modifications to the parking lot and general vehicle circulation are proposed. The proposed site plan indicates six dedicated spaces for queuing up in the coffee delivery lane, three universal vehicle charging stations, nine Tesla-specific charging stations. The applicant indicates that there is a total of seventy parking spaces on-site. Proposed circulation plan. Staff received questions and concerns regarding the original, the originally proposed circulation plan by one commissioner. The comments were afforded to the applicant directly. That had responded yesterday to the comments received and provided a revised circulation plan. Entire commission was notified on the project modifications and the email exchange itself. Revised circulation plans were uploaded to the city's website and are added to the public record. The proposed circulation plan, uh, the modifications now proposed before you tonight um, include a new, two new uh, keep clear zones to prevent vehicle congestion, dedicated ADA parking spaces, dedicated ADA path of travel, three dedicated uh, longer-term parking spaces for the coffee custom, coffee kiosk customers and the relocation of the Tesla charging stations, though the number of nine total stations is proposed to remain. And here is the latest circulation plan. You'll note the keep clear zones and the relocation of the Tesla charger stations to the top port of the site plan and then the dedicated ADA accessible routes. Staff has not received any correspondences from members of the public regarding this project proposal. The comments provided by Commissioner McLeod and addressed by the applicant are included as part of the public record. The project is also considered categorically exempt per section fifteen three three two in field development projects. And with that, staff recommends that the planning and zoning commission review and approve the proposed project subject to the findings and conditions of approval. And with that, staff is happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions for staff? Commissioner Jennings?
Sorry, that, this isn't a question exactly, but I just, I didn't really have a chance this afternoon to look at this revised circulation plan. And I'm, I'm just wondering if you're able to do, if not a side-by-side, then, you know, one after the other just help focus on what changed. So I, I think I see the addition of the ADA um, spaces and the keep clear lanes. What was the thing about the Tesla charging stations?
Yeah, can you see my mouse cursor?
Can, yeah.
Okay, um, so the previous Tesla charging stations were previously located on this aisle right here.
I see.
And they have now been relocated to this top portion here. Additionally, these two keep clear zones were specifically called out and marked in red. Additionally, the ADA path of travel is located here and indicated here along with the specific ADA parking spot and loading zone. And then um, three longer-term parking spaces for the coffee kiosk customers is proposed in this upper corner region right here.
Okay.
That's, that's all of the modifications when compared to the previously proposed site plan.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a quick question for you. Um, on the ingress into the sort of where the um, from East Shore Highway into the Target area, there's two inbound lanes going in and then the yellow arrows clearly are sort of the path of travel going to the, the left over there. Um, the, the ingress on the right-hand side, though, that's still shown in gray, gives an option of going either right to Target or straight to where the coffee kiosk is. Is that it sort of circulation pattern the current scenario? Or is that being changed in any way in association with this project?
To be honest, I'm not, I can't recall, honestly. I would probably defer to the project um, designer um, for more clarification.
Okay, maybe if, um, if the architect is listening, if you can uh, address that question when you have your presentation.
Hey, I, I went down and drove it today and I think, I think it's the current configuration of, up to, up to where you turn in for the new, for the proposed kiosk site.
Okay.
Maybe we better ask the applicant. A good question.
Okay. Uh, thank you. That was my, uh, that was my only question. Any other questions for staff before we?
I, I can see the arrows on Google Earth that, that confirm what Doug just said. Those are actually.
Cool. Oh, good.
There.
Perfect. Thank you.
Chris, that's great. Um, I, yeah, I, in the staff report, I think I saw that it, um, that the way you'd get coffee here is only by ordering from an app. I thought, oh, that's interesting. And so are the, 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 the three dedicated spaces there, they say app parking. So is that where you go to download the app in order to order your co- coffee or how, how is that going to work? So it, it must be that, I, I'm, my assuming is, uh, maybe the applicant will tell us, is that this particular vendor, this, the business model for this coffee kind of kiosk is you order from an app. Apparently that's new to me. Anyway.
Actually, I take it back. It's not the same. Sorry.
It's not the same. Oh, okay.
Misunderstood.
Okay, any, any other questions for staff? Otherwise, we'll move on to the project applicant. Okay, why don't we go ahead and? Okay, why don't we go ahead and, is the, Chris is the project applicant on the line?
Yes, he is. Philip Banta, you may speak. You have three, sorry, one moment. You have three minutes starting now.
You're on mute, Phil.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, yeah.
Great, great, okay. Madam, or Madam Chairman and Commissioners and Members of the public and staff, thanks for the opportunity to speak with you about our proposed project. Our, our goal here is to create a, a small piece of architecture that is very sympathetic with the current building that exists on the site right now, and also serves as an amenity principally for the patrons of that building and for people who are going to come in to charge their cars at the electric charging stations. The comments that were made by, I guess it was Commissioner McCloud that we received yesterday, we thought were, uh, were very pertinent and germane to issues of concern, and we attempted in our site plan to address as many of those as possible. The question about the app parking space is, that space is specifically for those who have not yet downloaded the app. And when they come to the stand, they're directed away from the other waiting spaces to around the corner to go and park and download the app. And their reward for doing that will be a free order of whatever they have ordered, free cappuccino, free latte, et cetera. And then from then on, they can order, order effortlessly from their phone. We do not anticipate that anyone will make the special trip off their freeway to patronize this stand. We think it's just going to be a little bit too much trouble for anybody to do that. But we do think that this is going to be a valuable way to serve customers and, and retain clients for the showroom and the, the repair facility itself. It's kind of a, an on, as I say, an onsite amenity. So I'm hope that that more or less gives the, uh, the idea of what the project is. Uh, Tim Southwick, the client, I think is also available, who may want to give, add some words to this as well. Tim, are you there? Well, he may not be, he may not be available right now. In any case, um, yeah, I think that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I ask a question. Yeah, oops, what was my question? Oh, yeah, do you, I would assume you expect customers coming from Target as well?
There may be some coming from Target. Target has its own coffee vendor inside the building, so if people are not happy with that brand of coffee or tired of it, they may indeed come over and try ours. But again, we're expecting, you know, this is not a major brand, so we're not expecting any, any significant coffee traffic. It's really, again, an onsite amenity. And that's why we have the walk up portion, walk up window as well. People will park, charge their cars, get out, they'll come over, get a coffee, and then we expect them to wander into the showroom to look at all the new shiny cars there. Yes.
Yeah, I was, when I first thought, I, I had visions of this high sales, high volume, you know, get many, many customers in there. And then I guess I understood from your response, thank you again for your responses to my questions, that it's not really meant to be a high volume, uh, coffee kiosk. And I was, is it, it will be owned and operated by the dealership? Or I was sort of curious about your business model, because it doesn't seem like they're going to be selling a whole lot of coffee, so.
Well, the owner of the facility will also own the kiosk and will manage it. So he's not really concerned with making money at the kiosk. He's.
Yeah, so that was my impression, that it really is an amenity supported by the dealership, and they're also supporting the dealership. So it's not really, um, like, one of these super high volume kind of things, which was my, which kind of triggered all my concerns, really, because I'm, I've seen other drive through coffee places with twelve cars lined up, and just imagine the chaos that could create in the intersection.
Yeah, and those are very legitimate, very legitimate concerns, that that will simply not happen here. The, the coffee stand itself will, will just not, it's not a well-known brand. People will not go out of their way to come to it. If they're coming to the facility in the first place, they will find it and be happily surprised. That's, that's our business model.
I did have a quick question for, for the applicant. Hi, Philip. Um, so on the site plan and the circulation plan that you, you've submitted here, this revised one, um, is this just to show the flow of traffic? Or are you planning on actually striping both, um, the, what is it called? The pass through lane, the pickup lane, as well as the keep clear zones? Can you just explain which of those will actually be striped on the ground versus, um, just for informational purposes on the architectural plans?
Well, I think everything you see there will be striped. Every, all, all the lanes will be delineated, so it's crystal clear when you're coming in what your options are. And the keep clear zones will also be, uh, marked sufficiently so that they are easily seen from distance.
And can I ask, given sort of the, the comment that you just made about the anticipated volume of customers, what the need is for the pass through lane?
That's just a, a situation where if somebody decides they're, just can't wait any longer, or they've decided, well, they're gonna go charge their car first before they get the coffee, they can pull out and go beyond those waiting in the queue.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kent, did you have a question?
Yeah, a little bit on the entry. So the way, maybe it's just drafting error, but you show, um, on the plan, only one line going into Target, where currently there are two lanes going into Target.
Let me see this. Hold on.
So right there, see the extra wide one lane going in? That's, there's actually two lanes there.
I see. Yes, you're correct. That is a drafting error, and what we should do is show that the division to, to the two lanes going, the two yellow arrow lanes should occur a little bit later, and that you still have the option to turn.
It's like that, that double, that Y thing you just had your arrow on, or Chris had his arrow on, should be in the, in the one lane to the, to the north.
That's correct.
Okay, then that would conform with what's there now. Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. All right, Chris, let's go ahead with public comments.
Okay, I see. I'm sorry, one moment. We have the property owner, Tim Southwick, with his hand raised. Tim, you have three minutes starting now. I'm muted, but I will unmute.
I'm unmuted. Okay, yeah, I'm the property owner. I've had trouble getting on while Phil was giving his presentation, and I can answer some of your questions. And Commissioner McCloud, you're the, you're the commissioner that goes to Starbucks?
Well, I drive by there. I go to Home Depot, actually.
This is nothing like Starbucks. Let, let me tell you how it's gonna happen. So someone's gonna come into the lane, and they're gonna want to order a coffee latte. And first thing I say, well, thank you for coming there, first time here. Your cup of coffee is free, but we'd like to go to our app parking lots and download our app, and our barista will bring you your coffee. If you, on the app, if you select, uh, join the, on the fly club, Coffee on the Fly Club, then, uh, when you, next time you come in, you can order on the, uh, app, and your coffee will be ready, say at eight thirty, and you're driving a Prius, and the barista will then bring out the car. Now, you'll notice, I did a study with a couple of Starbucks stores, and a Pete's Coffee Drive Thru in Alameda, and a, a Dutch Brothers Coffee Kiosk, a fairly, fairly new one. And you notice, I noticed that those four, uh, uh, drive through coffee kiosks had no room for an app lane. And, uh, and no, no, there's no property around those, those facilities to add an app lane. And that's the future that's coming, is a, all your, uh, all your restaurants in the future, building, uh, drive throughs are gonna have app lanes, uh, which this will have. So people will be able to, uh, order on, when I call, on the fly, we're calling it on the fly club. So this person will, will then want to order a cappuccino at seven thirty in the morning or eight o'clock in the morning, and they'll come by and on the fly, they'll get their cup of coffee. So next time you come into the kiosk, just order it online. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Doesn't look like we have any. Thank you, Tim.
Okay.
Okay. I see Jeremiah has his hand raised. Jeremiah, you have three minutes starting now.
Hey, so this meeting is obviously recorded and on YouTube for everybody to hear. Was I mistaken? Cause I'm gonna double check it. Sounds like the owner said, once you drive up, your coffee's free. And then something, you pay next time. Wow, I want to be part of the Fly Club. Hey, um, what's the name of the app? Fly Club? I mean, it'd be great if, uh, it'd be transparent, because that's how Albany is. We, we know everybody, everybody gets along, and this kind of thing seems like a secret. Like, we don't know the name of the app, we don't know what kind of coffee it is. It's like, when are we gonna find out, right? So we've got to include Albany. And your, your, your drafts, your, uh, your, what you presented to the city council tonight? Wow, that sure is definitely a rough draft. I mean, you know, you gotta come up with a better, better sketch than that. I don't even see the flagpole, I don't know. And what kind of flag are you gonna fly? I mean, is it, is it the brand of your company? Are you gonna at least put, you know, what kind of flag are you gonna fly? And are you gonna consider flying your, uh, flag at half staff, you know, on certain days? And it sure seems like there's gonna be a backup. You could only have, what, one, two cars in line around that turn, and then whoop, everybody's in the keep clear zone, everybody's in the driveway. You say, oh, it's not gonna be a backup. Well, there will be. How could you expect to have the future business? Oh, this is the future. So the future is nobody's gonna be using it? Only two people, and there's never gonna be a backup? Hmm. What about if you don't have a smartphone? What if you don't have an app? Are you gonna allow people to walk up to order something? Cause I might not have enough room on my phone for your app. So how about, you know, not a walk in technically, but maybe like a, a drive in to where, sure there's an app lane, and is there a not an app lane to where you can come in and order from a barista, you know, pay cash? So I, I like all those questions answered, cause I'd like to download the app, but you haven't even given the name of it. You haven't even given the name of your brand. What, what's the Fly Club? You know, and you only have one ADA spot? That's bare minimum. I mean, gosh, what happens if there's two ADA people? You left them out the loop. You know, where's the fire truck gonna park? I didn't see any red over there. Where's the fire truck gonna park? You know, so there's a lot of questions. It's obviously a rough draft. It seems needs to be tabled for a second reading, right? So, yeah, a lot of questions that I'd like to be answered, please. Thank you.
Time's up. I see no other speakers with their hands raised.
Thank you. With that, then we will go ahead and close public comment and turn it back to the commission for, um, comments and deliberations.
Just a quick clarification in response to the last speaker. It's called Joe Coffee. So if you go to joe.coffee online, that's where you can get the app and utilize that to order coffee in the future. And that was included as part of the packet and the correspondence that was posted, um, yesterday.
And just following up on that, I believe the speaker, we already discussed the fact that there is walk up capability as well. This doesn't just require, um, drive through options. So thanks for that clarification. Um, do any commissioners want to deliberate? Commissioner Jennings?
I can start, just a, a couple observations. And Commissioner McCloud, I did want to say thank you to you for raising, um, the questions that you did, a couple of which were similar to things I was thinking about when I was first reading through it, and others I, I wouldn't have thought about, but I, I think that the feedback you got in response to those questions certainly improved the, uh, the way this has been presented. But my observations would be, so first off, just, uh, in, you know, a family where we, full disclosure, own a Tesla and, uh, often have the experience on, you know, road trips or whatnot of, of sitting at charging stations. They're often at, you know, locations that don't have any kind of amenities, and then you're just, you know, you, you're sitting and looking at your phone, um, for half an hour, which isn't the worst thing in the world, but I have often thought it would be, um, nice to, you know, be able to get out of the car and get a beverage of, of some sort. So, um, you know, initially, I, just thinking about it from the perspective of people who might be using the, the charging stations, um, it did seem like this could be a, a nice thing to have. And certainly, it, it seems like a good location to have the, the charging, uh, stations in general. With respect to the, the traffic there, the amount of customers who would be expected, I, I also initially had the, the question about whether people were gonna be getting off the freeway. And then I remembered that, you know, within the last year, we had Target coming to us because despite having a gigantic store right off the freeway and what I think a, a lot of people would think is a pretty large sign, they, they seemed to think that the combination of those two things together wasn't enough to get people off the freeway, uh, to stop at their store, and they wanted a bigger and taller sign. And so thinking about it relative to the, the Target that's right next door, it, you know, just, just based on that evidence alone, um, it did seem unlikely to me that people would, um, take a, you know, a convoluted route off the freeway to, to stop and, and get traffic. So it, it does seem like it's gonna be serving the, you know, the immediate onsite population. Um, and, you know, before this year, I might not have thought that there was really a, a market, or maybe it wasn't even a good idea to have an app based business, excuse me, where someone would be where, you know, you could stay in your car that's getting charged and have someone bring it out to you. But I think COVID has changed a lot of, um, my perceptions about, um, how, you know, retail business transactions might work in the future. And so I, I think, you know, even six or eight months ago, I might have thought this wasn't something we necessarily wanted to get behind, or I would have had more concerns about it. It, um, it, in today's world, it seems like a reasonable way to, um, to approach the, the delivery mechanism. So, you know, I do, I want to make sure that there, that it's easy, that the pedestrian access within the site is easy, so that if people are charging their cars, it's easy to walk across the, the parking lot. But I, I believe the site plan provides for that. And, um, again, the, the clarifications that there will be the ability to, to walk up as well, um, puts, you know, my concerns about it, it generally to rest. So I'm, um, I'm supportive.
I appreciate the other commissioners' comments. Thanks, Ian, for your comments regarding the traffic access. Those were very helpful, I think. And I really have nothing further to add. I, I support the project. I think it's a good one.
Yeah, I'm the same way. I'd have nothing to add. I think it makes perfect sense. I had the same concerns as was mentioned, that first I thought it was a very busy site and then interference with traffic. But now I'm realizing, yes, it's just serving, which makes a lot of sense, serving the customers of the, of the dealership. So I think it looks good. I don't have any comments and I'm willing to support it.
Commissioner McCloud?
Yeah, um, yeah, I'd like to thank the applicants for their responses, uh, very timely. Yeah, um, yeah, I'd like to thank the applicants for their responses, uh, very timely and very clear in what they responded to, and how they changed the site plan to address the questions I raised. So, um, thank you very much for that. Uh, yeah, I think with the addition of the keep-clear zones, I think that's really helpful. And then thinking more about it, I, you know, if it did end up being some sort of problem blocking the intersection with too many vehicles, well, I'm sure the dealership will hear from Target quite quickly. If it is some sort of problem, and they will figure out how to solve that problem. So my concerns there are, you know, have gone away, and I really appreciate moving the ADA space and, um, creating actually a bigger kind of walking zone next to the kiosk. And then it's great to have more charging stations in Albany. In fact, that's part of our climate action and adaptation plan, is to increase the number of charging stations. So this is really a big improvement for the city in that regard. So, uh, that's a really positive step. So I support that 100%. As far as the architecture, I really like the little kiosk. I think it fits with the kind of high-tech look of the showroom. You know, nothing but, uh, positive things there. The only other thing I would maybe add would be, I would encourage you to do some sort of outdoor seating area, and I would be amenable to seeing the three parking spaces next to the pedestrian walking zone, next to the first, uh, waiting space turned into outdoor seating. We've been doing this around town to allow restaurants and cafes to have outdoor seating. It's part of the COVID response, and, uh, that became part of the plan. I'd be very happy. It seems like there's enough parking on-site. I don't know if, uh, you have excess parking there, but it seems like changing three spaces to a seating zone would be great for your Tesla customers who are waiting for a while, or other people who did walk up. So, um, having said all that, I support the project and look forward to seeing it happen.
Commissioner Donaldson?
He raises a good point. Um, staff, I just, can you confirm, Target did get noticed on this and did receive? So we, we can confirm that this is being done with Target's knowledge then?
Yes, they, they received the notice.
Good. Um, sorry, one more question. A, a year ago or so, Car- Target came, a couple of years ago, Car- Target came, and they did some expansion to their building, and they removed some parking. And I thought they put some parking over here, did they not, over in the, didn't they dedicate some of those spots?
I thought it was the other way around. They, they subdivided the, um, what was that overflow parking lot? And pulled their, the, the store parking.
Oh, they re-trenched. Okay, that's, thanks. That's what it was. Okay, great.
Great. I'll, I'll just add in my two cents. Um, I agree with you, and actually, I think, Commissioner McLeod, I agree that the comments that you raised were the same questions that I had. So thank you for raising those, and thank you to the applicant for getting those responses promptly in advance of the hearing. Um, and I would agree that, um, if those three spaces are not within some of the required parking for the, for the dealership, I think that's a great idea to provide some outdoor, um, seating as well. I think that's a great amenity, um, and helps to sort of humanize the space rather than, um, expecting everyone to just stay in their cars. So I think that would be a great addition, certainly. Um, and I do think sort of my, my original, um, review on this, I think part of it is just with all of the yellow arrows and with the, um, sort of no travel with the parking, or with the, um, the red hashed zones, it felt like, I think, a lot higher intensity than what the actual use is going to be. And so I do appreciate the applicant's comments about what their anticipated volume, um, of use is here. Um, and, and I, again, I think with the arrows of circulation of what's going to target versus already straight ahead, that that's not a change from the current status quo. That is the current layout for, for traffic flow. Um, I think all of that sort of squelches some of my initial concerns. Um, I guess maybe one final question for staff. If by chance, you know, I think we're all making, um, assumptions here that it's gonna be pretty low volume, and I think we're, we're all probably quite familiar with the Starbucks that's in the parking lot of the Home Depot, and that that can have often those, you know, overflow impacts and that sort of thing. If this ever were to become that scenario, which is not what's anticipated, is there a mechanism that we as a commission have, um, to have this pulled back to the commission in any way, or sort of have a, a re-review, or any conditions that would be triggered, just as a bit of a stopgap measure, um, on the off-chance that this does become, you know, the most popular coffee kiosk in town or whatnot?
Sure. Yeah, and because it is a conditional use permit, um, you do have discretion to include operationally-specific requirements. It runs with the land. Um, so you could include something, should you, um, move the project forward tonight, that, that could reflect that and that intent that basically reserves the right to, to, uh, review this in a future, you know, future setting.
Um, I mean, would it be possible to craft a condition, then, that's sort of at staff's discretion, that, you know, should there be, you know, ongoing complaints or vehicular conflicts that, um, affect the queuing of getting off East Shore Highway and into the, um, both facilities, both the Tar- the Target and the, um, car dealership, that the, you know, that planning staff would maybe first agendize this as an informational item of, you know, an issue has been elevated, and then we could discuss as a commission whether it's something that we wanted to pull back, for, you know, potential revocation, if that is an issue. I just, I wanna make sure we don't lose the opportunity that, you know, if this becomes the next emerging, most popular cult coffee place, um, that we're not, we're not making decisions on assumptions about utilization that are very behavioral, or behavioral, and a little less land-use-based. So I certainly would be, I mean, I agree, I'm supportive as proposed, and kind of, I think, with the intent of approving it. Um, but I would love to add a condition of approval that gives us that, um, sort of future-proofing, if you will, of, of.
And I, and maybe prudent in this case to also include a condition, um, of a compliance report after six months to a year of operation. We've done that on other conditional uses, and it's been really helpful just to bring that back to the commission with, um, you know, certainly an update, but also if there have been any issues and how they were remedied or further action was required.
And maybe that's all we need, is a, a compliance, you know, a, a six-month post-operation report back on, on sort of the status of traffic, um, or something along those lines. I don't know what the commissioners feel on that, but, um, that's kind of where I am right now. With that, is anyone interested in trying to craft a motion?
Try. Uh, I'll move approval of planning application 20039, design review and conditional use permit for a new coffee kiosk at 10:35 East Shore Highway, um, per, as described in the staff report, and with the plans that we've reviewed tonight, um, with the, uh, additional condition that the applicant, uh, consider, um, appropriate, um, outdoor seating, um, uh, adding that to the site plan before the building permits issued, and additional, um, condition that, uh, staff, uh, review the project within, uh, within, I would say, one year after it opens, uh, and bring a complying, so compliance report back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, if there are any issues. So we can review the conditional use permit.
With that, do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner McLeod on the second. Um, with that, I will call the vote then. Uh, Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Sorry, yes.
Commissioner McLeod?
Yes.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Yes.
Uh, and I vote yes on that motion as well. So that motion passes 5 to 0, um, which takes us on, on to item seven, new business, of which there is none agendized. Um, item eight, announcements, communication, and discussion. No items.
Yeah, uh, just very brief. At your last meeting, we talked about, um, scheduling a December meeting, and we left it at December 2nd. After, um, further consulting the calendar, we're gonna hold it on the 9th, which would be a regularly scheduled commission date. So, you said, the last thing of the year will be December 9th.
You said December?
Yeah, December 9th.
Okay, great. Thanks for that update. Um, and with that, item nine, next meeting is in two weeks.
May I add, add something? Uh, may just a comment or something. Um, I want to, uh, show everyone this. Hot off the press, I don't know if you can see it. It's a new book, a new Albany history book, uh, written by Karen Sorensen. Um, I got it because I, I contributed some photographs to it. Um, but, uh, anyway, uh, it's Stories of Albany, and chapter six is relevant because it's a short chapter about McGregor, Mr. McGregor, and the McGregor Homes, and, uh, uh, the work that he did in Albany. So it's a fun book. It, it talks about the trains in Albany. It talks about the garbage wars, uh, that ocean, of Ocean View that became Albany. Um, and, uh, uh, got some other stories. But the one about Mr. McGregor is sort of relevant to us, I think, and, and probably, um, everyone might wanna know about it. So I'd like to say how you get the book, I'm not sure. Probably it'll be at, be sold at Pegasus and, and/or, um, I know Karen is selling it. Um, she's an Albany resident, and, and she's selling it. And if you're interested, maybe email me, and I'll get, find out how you can purchase it. But it's a nice series, and this is her second one on Albany history. So I wanted to bring that up.
Thanks for sharing, Commissioner Donaldson. Um, any other final comments from commissioners? No? All right. Well, the next meeting, October 28th, uh, and is that one going to be a special session staff? Or is that gonna be regular 7:00 PM?
It's gonna be a regular 7:00 PM start time.
Great. Um, with that, then we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everyone, for another, uh, virtual hearing.
Okay, good night. Thank you.
Good night.